All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM Central, so we'll call this meeting to order. Let's establish, please, that we have a quorum, beginning with a roll call vote. Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
Juan Carlos?
Here.
John?
Here.
Thank you, and I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. And to help ensure that we are centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chun land acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of your agenda. Corby, would you please be our reader for this evening?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In the Verona area school district, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona area school district will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel and value and affirm in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system, such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona area school district is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity.
And?
The land acknowledgement. There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chun nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you, Corby. Good to have you back, too. Hope your travels went smoothly from Cork.
Yeah.
Board members, if you wouldn't mind drawing your attention to the rest of tonight's agenda. Any questions, amendments, please share those, otherwise I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Sure.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda as written, please signify with aye. Aye? I gotta wait for the lag. Thanks, John. Any opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved. So just looking at a few of our slides here, wanting to honor, again, we've elevated this at our last meeting, but honoring the fact that we are in June Pride Month, and just sharing our district's commitment to living our equity statement through this month in particular. So glad to share some space for that. And then also recognizing that this week is Juneteenth. So another slide, just honoring that that holiday is happening this Thursday. I know some of the municipalities around us, Pittsburgh did a flag raising today in honor of Juneteenth, so elevating again the importance of this day and the meaning for our district in holding that day. Anything you want to add, Dr. Perry?
No, thank you. And also just in, we want to make sure we, you know, not just recognize Pride Month, but live it out as to our equity framework. I appreciate our board for always continuing to hold us accountable, but also have those high expectations for our work here. And secondly, with Thursday being Juneteenth, this will be the second year that the Verona School District has recognized this as a day off for staff to fully embrace and the meaning and understanding of Juneteenth. We'd like to thank our work with VAEA and Vespa for coming to that space with our comment discussions. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And we'll move ahead to, our agenda is a little bit different this evening, so thanks again, board, for approving that. We're going to move to some board action on just some second readings that we had from previous work. So the first thing you'll see is the second reading of the Act 20 promotion policy. So some reminders for board members and the community that that policy is linked in board docs, not only for this week, but for last week as well, where we spent more time at length discussing and having Amy Engelken surface some information about that policy. Board members, any additional questions or thoughts you have for the second reading of the proposed promotion policy related to Act 20 and Wisconsin State statute? Okay, hearing none, then I would accept a motion to approve the presented promotion policy as the method in which the district satisfies the requirement of Wisconsin statute 118 dot 33 sub 6 sub A sub 3 promulgated, my math brain had to have a moment there for that one, through 2023 Act 20. Is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving the promotion policy as presented by district leadership, signify with aye. Aye? Any opposed?
I'm not opposed. I said aye, but nobody heard me because I said it too soon because I was trying to time it sooner.
I waited really strategically, too, but we'll.
I literally said it while you were still talking because I figured that was the timing.
We're going to get this, John. This is so great that you're here. All right. Yes, any opposed? The promotion policy has been approved. Thank you, board. And then similarly, we have a second reading. So last board meeting, we spent some time in discussion around our GC policy around public comment. Thank you again, Joe, for your work on that, which has been named GC 11. And then simultaneously, within the same vote, we do have just the revised public comment actual sheet of paper that is linked as well. So when folks come in person, we just have an updated document that they'll fill out again to acknowledge and reflect what we have created in GC 11. So based on a little bit of feedback that we had last meeting, any further comments or discussion around this second reading of GC 11 and the public comment document?
That's enough.
Okay, I know. I'm kind of reading the ruminant, wondering if it's rhetorical. With no other further discussion, I would accept a motion then to approve GC 11 as presented.
Sure.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of approving GC 11 as presented, signify with aye.
Aye.
Nice. Any opposed? All right, our public comment policy has been approved. All right, a little bit of board business out of the way, and back to celebrations. I kind of like this back and forth of some acknowledgement of exciting things, including we have some student recognition, which is our graduation ceremony.
Absolutely. So again, thank you. We have many of our high school staff here, Principal Cox. We had the honor to this Sunday of celebrating our 478, you're right, on the head, 478 graduates of the Verona Area High School. Just phenomenal ceremony and also 97 minutes. Nice job, Mr. Cox. 478, the biggest class, but still 97 minutes. Again, nice job, Mr. Cox. And thank you, Board of Education, for joining us on stage. We also had the opportunity to celebrate one of our former staff members, but a heart of our community, Ms. Pat Worley. And just being able to acknowledge her as a distinguished guest was definitely an honor within itself. And then the smiles on the face of our graduates. We definitely want to give a special thank you to Epic for allowing us to use the phenomenal facility, puts us in this position, not only to have a great space for our graduates, but also allow us for all family and staff to be there without worrying about tickets and things of that nature, so we can all have a part in that celebration. And to the many workers that came there on Sunday and really helped to be a really smooth event, we're really excited for that day. A year out, we, Sunday again, June 7th of next year, will be ready to go for the class of '25, '26, and planning's already underway.
Takes a little bit of time to get that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. But really, I want to give students appreciation for just the, not just the experience, but what it meant for each of our graduates, as they were honored when they cross the stage.
Yeah, added shout out to just all the staff members, district members that were helping with parking, and district staff members that helped clean up water bottles, et cetera, around the Epic space when graduation ceremony was done, with just all the countless number of people that put it together. It was a lovely, lovely day. I think I only jabbed you about 17 times with diploma covers as we tried our smooth little handoff scenario, so we're going to keep working on that, too.
When you watch the video, you can't tell at all.
Awesome.
Nice.
Keep a nice, okay. And then staff recognition.
Aye. Absolutely.
Are you saying aye? Are you voting to say yes?
Thanks, John. Today, we're honored to recognize two of the dynamic staff members here on the Verona School District. First, Erica Gallagher, who, how you doing, Erica? She has been acknowledged for Wisconsin Council of Teacher of English Diversity and Inclusion Award, when we think about not just her work in the classroom, her impact, but also the alignment with our strategic framework and our focus to be honored in a World of Diversity and Inclusion Award. And it just, right nose on my stance on this, but when it's trying to be dismantled, we continue to stand up and stand, stand up and show out, and I appreciate that among our staff. So congratulations to you. And definitely want to, on behalf of myself and our complete district, want to give you a round of applause, and I'll turn it over to our Board of Education for any comments.
Absolutely love working with you, with the GSA. She does an amazing, just amazing job, keeping us on task and together, and just the improvements, just the things we've done in such a short amount of time. You're just amazing. So congrats, everybody, and looking forward to working with you again this upcoming year.
Absolutely. I just want to say thank you, Erica. I'm truly, we are so blessed to have you here, and I want you to know that that's reciprocal. So your desire to stay in our district, obviously with the work you're doing, is so incredibly meaningful, so this is where, as board members, to continue to hear from staff members on how we can keep elevating the work that you're doing. So please know that we are absolutely in support of what you are doing, what you bring to the district, and we hope that we can stay a place that you want to be because of the work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations again. Next, we are honored with Jamie Morris. Jamie Morris was, won the Boya Unsung Hero Award. Jamie is where I want to say, FFA, but is so much more than that. There's not a space that you, you go anywhere and she's there, and she's working with students, and she continues to just be a highlight of our high school and our district in multiple spaces. The, when you see our students that just galvanize and just go to her because of the impact that she has on them, it's just, it's just amazing to see. And at the high school, they get to see it firsthand, and I get a little snapshot of when I get to come into the space. So congratulations to Jamie for your amazing work for the Boya Unsung Hero Award, and we'd like to give you, definitely deserve far more than a round of applause, but give you a round of applause, and I'll turn it back over to the board from there. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, no, I just want to say, we talk a lot about kind of how we can, as a district, stand out from our peers, and I think the way that we do stand out is in the quality of our staff and in the ways that they find creativity and, I mean, innovation is a word we've been using a lot here at the board table. And so to be, to honor that from our staff members when they're showing it is, is really exemplative of exactly what we're trying to do here. So thank you very much for representing us so well.
Jamie, and thank you. I know at the board table, we talk a lot about how much we value beyond the core academic subject areas. This building reflects the value that we have as a district in that, the work that you do, the space, what you bring for course offerings, how you support students, so how we continue again to elevate that because we hold that in high regard, and how we can continue at this table to really show value to you as an instructor in those non-core academic spaces. So again, however we can help elevate the work that you're doing, we are so appreciative because we really hold value to the work that you're bringing. Thank you. Congratulations, staff members. You're more than welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you like, but we certainly appreciate your time.
Am I on stick with budget numbers?
Right. There we go. We will continue on with the superintendent's report, some finance updates. I'm shocked. Thanks, team. All righty. So great we get continuous updates.
This will be brief, at least, I think both on the finance and the HR side. So we've got Pete and Rochelle here for an update on state budget, an update on our budget projections, and then Rochelle's got a quick hiring update. So we're going to do a little look back. As mentioned, pre-board meeting, we have the very exciting central office move going on, where the downstairs central office had to be cleaned out. That meant cleaning out my office, where I uncovered a 1993 budget book. So we're going to do a little Back to the Future thing. Then we're going to look at our budget calendar, we're going to take a look at the state budget line, and we've got an update, there's some news coming out of Madison. We're going to refresh assumptions in line with what we're hearing out of Madison. We've got a quick update on where we think the, this year's budget cycle will end up, and then Rochelle's got a staffing and hiring update. So let's start with Back to the Future, all of you folks who are, this is like my heyday, Nirvana, Pearl Jam, Michael Jordan on three peaks, 90210, the original Jurassic Park, Dr. C. Things were good back in 1993.
Mr. Reesley, let's not ever say 90210 again.
I believe we watched 90210 and Melrose Place.
Oh, yeah. Instead of doing, instead of studying.
Yep. All right, we digress. A quick little history lesson on how much this district has grown in that period of time. 1993, we collected $11 million in property taxes, and '25, '26, we're projecting $61 million. State aid was $4 million, now it's all the way up to $28 million in our estimate, and we clipped and cut a little balance sheet from that budget workbook. Also thought the next slide was potentially even more interesting, where the district back in 1993 was setting a mil rate of $21.34, $21 in property taxes for every $1,000 of property value. We're basically half of that now. So I think the kind of, the continued mantra around being taxed out of your home is certainly a thing, and we understand property taxes, but I also think perspective's important, that only 30 years ago, the taxing rate on property in our school district was, was over $21 per thousand, and now we're half of that. And this is the year that the revenue limits were into effect.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So 1994. There were some other interesting things in there, though we didn't really get bogged down to 1993, but we thought we'd just include that today. Our budget calendar, again, we're still treading water a little bit until we get ourselves a two-year state budget. We've got an update on that tonight. A reminder to the board that we have a busy fall when things all come together. We'll present to you a draft budget book, we'll then print it, deliver it, and then we go through the whole process again, an annual meeting with a budget hearing, and then finalize our levy in October. A little update from what we're hearing from the Joint Finance Committee, which had shoved through what they call an omnibus just late last week. It is appearing at least the first go from the state, the Joint Finance Committee at the state, is that even after calls from around the state, and even our own local advocacy that Dr. Clarity actually led, it appears that the prioritization of special education reimbursement from the state, at this point, is falling on basically deaf ears. So the money at least put into the original budget from the Joint Finance Committee was about $300 million in extra spending on public education. Tony Evers' original budget was about $4 billion of additional spending on public education. So obviously woefully short. Looks like there could be another investment in school levy credit, which again is tax relief, is not new spendable money for schools. It does appear that $325 a student is holding. At this point, we do think this budget will be later than the chart we've got up here, where typically we get a signed budget from the governor in early July, but the Joint Finance Committee is still busy right now, and the governor's not had a chance to take a peek. We did detail some of the things we're hearing in terms of what did get passed from the Joint Finance Committee, just so the board understands the updated assumptions we put into next year's budget. So number one, and again, we were, we essentially had a flat budget for special ed funding. We were not all in on the 60% reimbursement, and at this point, they did include a slight increase on special ed categorical aid, where they're claiming that it will go from 35 one year to 37 the next. But again, that is based on a pot of money that ends up being passed eventually if the governor signs the budget. So from our very conservative assumptions, which was 32%, maybe even a little less, there is a slight increase in spendable money because we get reimbursed slightly more, but that is woefully short of 60%, which would mean a couple of million dollars for our school district if that got passed in the budget. At this point, the general aid pot, at least in what got passed by the Joint Finance Committee, appears to be flat. And Pete and I did not project that, when on every other year basis, they typically do increase what the state kicks in for, for aid. And remember, that is not spendable money for us, that is taxpayer relief, but we use tools in terms of Fund 39 and maybe a potential operating reform down the road, where aid is quite helpful for our school district. So we took an aid hit where we think we're probably down $2 million the following year. If all this goes through, this is not set me stone. The lawmakers through the Joint Finance Committee did prioritize high-cost special ed reimbursement, which is something that wasn't even on the books for our joint advocacy in Southern Wisconsin, and I think statewide from many of our state organizations, where they are, where they've got a two-year plan to actually get up to 90% reimbursement for high-cost special ed. And those are, those are students with more staffing, typically staffing-intensive needs related to their IUPs, where once they reach a certain threshold, the state reimburses school districts for students that have, that essentially are more costly to staff. And that, if all that went through, would be an additional $275,000 of spendable money for our school district. So all in all, about half a million dollars, I guess, to the good, but still woefully short of what we were hoping to see in the next two-year state budget. The drop in aid, potentially if we continue to have a mil rate flat way of drawing up the budget, which has worked well for us over the last five years or so, that could mean we have a few less tools in the tool belt for prepayment on capital debt related to Fund 49, because anything we don't get in aid, we have to tax for. And if we have to tax for it, that means that's fund 10 taxing, and we likely would not have our mil rate increase at a rate that would cover for the, the prepayment on debt that we've done in the past. Questions on the state budget before we work through, just a quick update on our, where we think the five-year assumptions heading? Okay, so for me, very disappointing news from the capital, the investment in public education is quite frightening. It is nowhere close to an inflationary increase, and we'll continue to put school districts on referendum, if this two-year budget passes. Well, I was just going to pile onto your comment, because you, you're going to see districts across the state have to go to referendum, including eventually, we're probably going to have to. And I want to make sure no one out there who's listening thinks there's a narrative where that's because of how we're spending the money. It's because they're not giving us enough money to be able to operate our school district in the inflationary environment that we're in right now. So we, everybody keeps falling behind. And, you know, we did all this advocacy, where we went and talked to legislators of both parties, and everybody all seemed to agree that special education funding was the one thing we could all get behind and that affected every school across the country, or across the state in different parts of the state, rural and urban, and, and still it's very disappointing. Yes, it is. Quite disheartening, no doubt. And you'll, you'll hear this, I don't think Rochelle has details in her HR update, but we smell this coming. We're like five and a half people leaner, seven people leaner than we were the year before, where we used some, you know, essential stat attrition for us to continue to kind of get leaner in prep for the next two years. We went through the headaches of going out to bid for healthcare to try to also make this budget a little bit leaner, but it does appear things are, things are not super open in the next couple of years if any portion of this goes through. So the board's super familiar with this five-year projection. We use it for two purposes. One, a look ahead to the budget we're building for next year, and that is the fiscal year 2026 budget, and then a look ahead to the next three or four years down the road. We had Pete build in a relatively flat mil rate, like we've done in the past. A couple of things in there that we'll want to highlight. Fiscal year '26, you can see a drop in state aid. That is different than the last time we shared this with the board. If that does hold true and the budget is eventually passed, you can see our levy increase is the lowest it has been in quite some time, with a levy increase of only 3.4%, with inflation from the year before at 4.12. Where do we get that from? That's redoing healthcare and carrying seven fewer people than we did the year before. The board should know we've still built, at least into this initial budget, an inflationary increase for staff, but we need the. But we need the state budget to be solidified before we're comfortable making that recommendation through the collective bargaining process to the board. You can also see at the very bottom there where we did pass a deficit budget a year ago to purchase land. That's at $7.9 million budget deficit. We believe we'll have $645,000 of extra spendable money. But that's the first year of a two-year budget. Where you can see the following year, all these assumptions held true, all the way down to how many students we have. There would be a $2.2 million budget deficit for the second year of the state budget. And then that would cascade forward through probably tougher years if those types of things held true over the next couple of two-year budget cycles. Questions on that? Not super excited. I can tell you right now, if 60% special ed reimbursement kicked in, I think we'd probably be in the positive on both fiscal years. Just that simple one, if they would have funded that, we would have made it.
And another thing to reiterate, what we're talking about, if you see these red numbers here at the shortfall, that's when we start thinking about or talking about an operating referendum. But what that doesn't mean necessarily, and most likely but not, is a tax increase. Because when we did this three years ago, or whenever it was, we got more revenue authority and ended up lowering the mill rate. And it's very likely we'd be able to do that again.
That is true. So we did not highlight the Fund 39 line of that budget forecast. But we have an annual minimum debt payment on our capital debt of about $10 million. In that flat mill rate, Pete and I have built into the budget, will present to the board, an extra debt payment of next year. You know, another $5 million and the following year, another $6 million. That would give us the possibility of using the same strategy in the event we had to ask taxpayers for more spendable operating money through a referendum. If we get there. And we'll see where the next two-year budget cycle does end up. And we'll continue to double down for folks if we end up in that spot. We've saved taxpayers over $10 million in interest using this strategy and we have not yielded taxes at the same time. So we positioned ourselves well, but no one, our voters aren't in love with it. No one wants to see that on the ballot box. Certainly, it is not what school boards and school administrative staffs get into the work for. We're about kids and we're not necessarily around information sessions and pitching another operating referendum. But that's the nature of the work in public education. There's others to it, especially in Wisconsin. So that's what we got for the next, what we think will, a lot of those could potentially hold all the way through our budget book.
So Chad, first, thank you for the update. You know, I've been sitting here, obviously knew the numbers, read all the articles, but just feel like it's important just to say and name this is that there shouldn't be any doubt in anyone's mind in our society that public education is the greatest equalizer that we have in our country. It's the one thing in our country that allows anyone to reach any bar. And you look right over to my shoulder and you're looking at it. We know and believe in the grown-up school district that education is the only platform of true freedom in our country. So when you think about those two significant things and then hear the message from Joint Finance that we are not going to invest in our most vulnerable students and not invest in public education overall in a manner that is sustainable for our students to truly grow and thrive, is, I heard the word disheartening, I think it's deplorable. You know, and just speaking my truth as a leader of this district, but also saying as someone, as all of you, are invested in every single child that comes in our hallways and every single child, that we had an apt opportunity to stand up for, advocate for, and to give the honor of educating, to send this message that you don't deserve a high-quality education and have it not funded is just really a message that, you know, I think I know that we're better than that as a state. I just got back from visiting my mom, flew back in, did a quick weekend trip. Every headline in the state I was in was one of the biggest spending bills in public education. And I walked back to our state and not even a worthy percentage of what actually should be funded towards education. You know, we have amazing staff. You're gonna hear numbers around some of the highest sales of our literacy numbers that we've ever had. We've got two award-winning staff members here. We have the Wisconsin Principal of the Year sitting in this space. And you're telling us we don't want to fund it when our students are able to excel with the staff that we have to be able to deliver world-class education here. That's, you know, so just wanted to put that out there. Anyone wants to listen or record or send it, we've been in this space, we've had the conversations. But I'm not gonna give this doom and defeatist attitude. We're gonna keep fighting until we're funded in a way that our students deserve. So just thanks for that, and just be able to put that out there.
Thank you. And I just want to elevate too, that this community has shown over and over again that you all support our public schools here monetarily, philosophically, all of it. And I just, I feel like it also throws in the face communities, individual homeowners who live in communities that are willing to take and do what they can financially to support schools, but their state representatives can't do the same thing. I just, yeah, as community members, I just, I hope there's a level of frustration and understanding of the ownership that we're doing on an individual level compared to the lack thereof at the state level. And I appreciate your word deplorable. Use that too, if that's okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, and dichotomy, I think in some regards, your statements almost ring more true to the landscape of our entire state. We're super fortunate to be sitting in this room with an incredibly supportive community and a school board that believes in our work. And to have a state budget passed like this and have many of the communities in the state actually not even have a board for a community that can pass an operating referendum, those are really the school districts where all of a sudden it is not free and appropriate public education anymore because you're not getting the same thing in some of the communities that don't support public schools like you. So that's part of the other piece that, in my words, is so disheartening. Because the gap continues to widen, because if this hangs true, we'll likely be having an operating referendum conversations within the next year. That's really, we wouldn't have a choice. All right, hate to be a downer, but we're gonna do a little bit of good news on the way out here. Our year-end budget is wrapping up better than we thought it would. As a reminder, we started the budget with an eight and a half million dollar budget gap, a deficit budget, because we bought like, Pete currently is projecting right now that number will land at about anywhere between $6.6 and $7.2 million. We do last round of payroll and end up paying the rest of our bills and we would have an update to the board once we get past July 1 and Pete and his team can clean everything up. True, Pete?
Exactly.
All right, good segue to Rochelle. And a couple of our board members certainly mentioned the fact that we are in a good place as far as us locally and supporting our public schools. From afar, which you're gonna hear tonight, I think does represent a strategic framework taking hold, having a superintendent that's here and here to stay, a school board that believes in our staff and has voted to compensate them appropriately. Because life and human resources, in my opinion, is better than it was three or four years ago. And I think you're gonna hear that from Rochelle. I think we are a desirable school district. And I think we're getting some amazing people that we're able to interview and eventually hire teams with our students. Rochelle, I'm gonna turn a quick staffing update over to you.
Perfect, and thank you, Chad. One thing that we really prioritized this year is knowing an unknown state budget. And so while we have been very strategic in how we work through hiring and staffing, we knew we needed to support Chad and Pete and you and balance the budget at the end of the day. So all of the moves that we've been able to do this year have not been, have been through attrition, have not had any layoffs or surplusing, which is very good for our staff. We've prioritized that, like Chad said, we have seven FTE held back at this point. Yet our class sizes are still very small. We have desirable class sizes. We have support systems in place to support our staff. We're doing all the right work. One thing that we didn't celebrate too much, and I want to thank our SAS team tonight, is really some of the hard work that we did in October, November, December, and January, diving deeper into how we staff across the district using data. And that was in collaboration with academic services and student services and how we rolled it out to our leaders so that our leaders understood what a staffing allocation process looks like based on actual data and how each department is able to make staffing recommendations and how that holistically applies across the district. We've also done, like I said, some internal moves to really help with class sizes. No one has been laid off. There's been no one that has been surplused. But as we're seeing attrition, we are seeing needs from other buildings maybe vary. And so we're trying to do some equity-based staffing through attrition and moving folks around in the right spaces so that we have the right supports at the right time. The one thing I want to just call up in this space is that because we don't have a state budget just yet, base wage bargaining has been put on blocks and the handbook updates have been put on. And I know a lot of our employees really, at this point of the year, are looking forward to understanding what that looks like for next year. So we've been very clear with our unions. We're all in this together, but we can't really make decisions just yet until we have a better idea of what the state budget looks like. Chad, can you move me forward? Oh, you're in it. Great, here's the exciting work that's going on. We have posted 56 positions since March 1st. It's actually 58 as of right now. When we put the slide deck together, there were two teacher positions open. We have four now. So we had two people put in their resignations today who have really amazing opportunities. So we have four teacher positions open and a hourly staff member positions open. That's really good. We are sitting in a better spot now than we have had in the past. And we fully expect that we will be fully staffed when this school year starts with the top quality, high-quality folks that align to the district. Some of our successes this last year and even just in the last couple of months have really been about what's happening in our buildings. We have amazing instructional leaders. We have top compensation and benefits packages that help attract and then retain our employees. We've had huge successes in some of our jobs being posted. 15 years ago, you would hear about pools of candidates of hundreds for a job. This year, we hit over 78 candidates for one position. That's an amazing accomplishment to you and to all of our employees about why Verona is such a desirable place to work at. Our hard-to-fill positions are filling quickly. We are working together and collaboratively to raise the focus of the community. We're reaching far to hire the right person. And our teacher mentor program, which really focuses on mentoring our teachers in their first through third year, has really expanded and has been really providing the right resources so that new educators that come to the district are not leaving. And so we are kind of looking at this from all different angles to make sure we're retaining and growing our staff. A few things that I want to highlight. When we talk about top candidates, we are always making sure that we align our top candidates and folks that we hire to our strategic framework and equity framework. And we're prioritizing that in our decisions. We're doing multiple reference checks. Once we get to the point where we're ready to hire someone. And we've taken it a step further and we're also doing employment verifications. The reference checks typically are who the candidate wants us to talk to. Employment verifications are who we determine who to talk to to make sure that those things align. And the other thing that we're really prioritizing this year is immediate onboarding. So those folks that we're hiring now for the beginning of this next school year are already getting their feet in the door and they're starting to do onboarding. We're getting their computers earlier. We're getting them connected to people here. So that once the school year starts next year, we're not crawling to get ready. We're gonna be running because everyone is gonna be onboarding. So it's a really good hiring update at this point. And we know that there's continued successes that we can continue to solve. Any questions?
Just yay.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment tying it back to what we were talking about with Chad. Like, this is everything that we're working towards. Because none of what we do matters if we don't have an ability to attract and retain the best staff out there. We're sitting in this beautiful building, but that's not gonna do anything educating students unless you put the right people in it. And we need to keep doing what we have been doing to keep attracting and retaining all the people that we do. And that's why when we look at, you know, if we do get to a point in the future we have to go to an operating referendum, it's so that we have room in our budget to be able to do that without raising that mill rate, which is what we were talking about being able to do.
I mean, I got so much to say about this. First of all, the mentor program, I just want to let folks know that the programmatic shift that has happened, that we now have full-time people dedicated to running that mentor program, back when it was a different structure and we had amazing educators kind of coaching in a one-on-one way, just the way the district has rallied around a restructuring of that mentor program, I think is really speaking to the impact of that and the amazing folks that are running that program. So just to elevate how key that is, because the data still around retention, not only just in a district, but in the profession in general, is still, you know, really dismal at times. So what we can do to really support and empower our beginning teachers, I appreciate so much the district rallying around that because it's so important. The reflection of our staff, I think, is directly a reflection of what we hope is happening. I mean, right, keeping amazing teachers here and having people desire to come here. That, to me, is the true reflection of all the work that we attempt to say that we're doing. The data dives in terms of where staffing is going. And we've talked about at the board table, your money goes where your values are. And so being able to really dig into that and articulate to staff with concrete numbers why staffing is where it is and to families and communities, I think that's so impactful that it isn't just a mysterious shell game, that staff are involved in those conversations. And just so much of the culture of the district. All the things we try to do financially to compensate staff is also directly married to how it feels to work here. There's only so much that any district can do to compensate staff. So the fact that the school culture here can be created as such that people want to stay and come, that, all of that, I think, just speaks a lot of volume. And I just want to share gratitude across the district and how excited that makes me to stay and be a part of things. I think that was all.
Thank you, Chad.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Oh, that was the end of the update? I was kind of expecting. Mic drop, I guess. Okay, wonderful. Thanks, team. Moving on to public comment, I am not aware of any. Lori, anything that's coming for you? Okay, thank you. So then we'll move on to board actions. So we have two monitoring reports this evening, board. So we'll start with OE 11, instructional programming. We were given materials ahead of time, a video, all of that is linked as well in board docs. So we'll get some high-level reminders from the team and take some time to process the report. And all of these are hard copies for you as well, board, if you're kind of perusing your pile.
So as we get ready for, thank you, President Murphy, as we get ready for our two monitoring reports, you know, there's a good thing about our calendars when we're able to do two monitoring reports on the same meeting. But also, it is, and just name a challenge for all of us, to completely move our minds to two distinctly different styles of monitoring. Right now, we're specifically in the operational expectations, which are as compliancy as compliance can be. That's why we often do the videos in advance because it's purely, did we do it?
Yep.
Here's the proof that we did it, and it is not the result of the indicator. It is, did the indicator get done?
Yep.
And so, and then we will move later to a monitoring report. We'll, so here are the indicators and what are the results and the impact on ourselves. So right now, we're purely in operations. And we'll turn that over to Dr. Hawkins and to Amy O'Gins. And I know each of you enjoyed the video that was put out in advance. And thank you, Dr. Hawkins, for doing that. And I think everybody's always scared about making a face on there. I'm freezing when they suck the landing. Nice job.
No face on that one.
I appreciate the pace. It was great pace. Like, I absorbed all of it. Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This evening, tonight, we're gonna go over OE 11. And as President Murphy said, we did share the video for your review of what it says. "As the superintendent shall maintain a program of instruction that offers challenging and relevant opportunities for all students to achieve..." relevant opportunities for all students to achieve the outcomes defined in the board's results policies. And so what we're going to lift up tonight is that the leadership moves that we want to share with you all for this year, 2425, would be the opening of K-8 foundations. And so on June the 6th, we had an exhaustive presentation where we had our director, Dr. Helberg, as well as Carly Adams, came to chair the evolution and the growth of foundations. That is one of our key strategies this year. And then our second strategy was ensuring that student voice was reflected in board's offerings at the secondary level as well as at the elementary level. And at the elementary level, that was seen through our previous curriculum. And that was designed through the whole process of the adoption process. It was designed to ensure that the text was diverse and reflected the actions of our diverse learners. When we think about our moves for next year, we're going to continue to expand our continual supports. What you'll notice is that we tied each one of our instructional moves to the indicators. So our first one is tied directly to 11-1, where we're going to continue to expand our continual support, more importantly, to secondary, 9-12. And that will include students with IUPs and students without IUPs. So we want to provide options and pathways for students to prepare them to thrive in a diverse global society. We're going to continue to refine special education service delivery model to fully define the least restrictive environment and work to ensure that students are supported in spaces that meet their individual needs. We're going to continue to explore ways to capture student voice. And we're going to focus on artificial intelligence. And we're going to be intentional to think about jobs that don't exist. We have to think ahead. We're also going to expand our acceptable use policy to include guidance around ethical and purposeful use for AI for both students and staff. And then we're going to further develop opportunities for talent development through advanced learning programs. OE 11 directly aligns to strategic framework priorities of student agency. Hold on, I lost one. Got ahead of myself. The priority of value and belonging, student agency, and inclusive teaching and learning. And what I will say is that we're fully compliant in all eight categories and the 12 indicators that are outlined in meeting the board's expectations. And so just to highlight again, OE 11-5, that is the one where we talk about new and innovative programs. And so again, just to uplift the work of foundations. Last year, it was truly still a thought. We were still trying to figure out space. In fact, President Murphy, just last, earlier tonight, we said something new will take the interest of people. Last year, we were looking for spaces for where foundations was going to be. And so we had looked at several spaces in our district, and we landed on using the former registrar's office, and then we moved the registrar's office to Badger Ridge. But again, we recognized that there was a need to support our students with complex profiles. And so with that, the evolution at the beginning of foundations elementary through K-8. So that's OE 11-5, and that specifically supports innovative and instructional, innovative So again, we're fully compliant. And I'll pause and allow for questions and/or questions.
So thank you for saying, Dr. Hawkins. And before the board goes into discussion, I just wanted to remind that normally, and I'm not going to, if the timing was right, we would have done the pathways presentation on the same day. As we weren't going to have our staff members available on this week. So we did it two weeks earlier. So if you could try to mentally connect that conversation with what we were elevating as one of our highlight leadership moves this year to this one. I understand there is a two-week gap between that.
As we can continue to go through these reports, just kind of year after year, right, that cadence admittedly is helping me as a board member to just revisit. And I feel like I see things, I just learn as we go, right? So every time we go through these reports, there's just different things that I think about and land on. And kind of the point that you made, Dr. Clarity, as we came into this, that the OEs are kind of a little bit more checkboxy, right? Did the district do what, you know, we've asked you to do in terms of just running the district? And this one is interesting because it's about instruction. And so instruction bleeds so closely into results. And I, and this is maybe more for the board. I just, I found myself getting a little bit stuck on 11.3 as a policy statement. Looking at the indicator as well, but the policy statement says that you will effectively assess and identify and address significant things that you noticed because of those tests. And that is really, to me, on the results side of things, right? What to do with the data? This, to me, feels like, did you collect the data? To be able to acknowledge what's happening instructionally. So I'm finding myself separating over that just in and of itself because there's no indicator that addresses the results of the testing, nor should it be here, in my opinion. So does that mean that that statement needs to be adjusted on a policy side because we ought not to be looking at the results with OE 11? Do you all kind of see where I'm getting a little tight? Because that's where I've been in this space of, as we talk about what we want to see for data as a board, there's a lot of data we're not seeing with that 11.3, but it really shouldn't be here in the first place. So I think that's just a space, you know, as board members, as we think about taking that time to revisit policy and have those discussions, that's something I'm going to play for myself. And I'd just be curious if that brings up any responses from anyone else. But just to delineate really clearly, right? What is operational? What is results? And that one, I just found to be kind of interesting.
I agree with you.
Now, there is the report itself, I think, is really living in what you all described, right? Of just trying to ensure that, you know, structurally, is the district functioning to be responsive to setting up the programs? And then where do we kind of see the impact of that work?
Yes, this one really allows us to create the conditions that the results can follow. So that's, without this, you can't have that.
Right. And how we tie the two together, it's almost like you can make a map of 11.3, you lead stick action with R2.1. Yeah, which could be kind of an interesting crosswalk, you know, for more work to do for someone. Right. Otherwise, I think, yeah, the report, I would agree with compliance and my sentiment. And appreciate, again, all the links and the data for ourselves, the video, all the things to really be able to let us process before we come to the board table and for the community to have access to. Other questions for the team before we start to shift OE 11 to board ownership? Okay, all right. So members of the board, we have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE 11. I'll accept a motion now to approve the report as presented, and we can just engage in any further discussion around compliance. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Juan Carlos, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion than board members as we approach a vote toward approving the monitoring report as in compliance? Okay, we have a motion from Juan Carlos and a second by Joe. All those of approving OE 11 as being in compliance signify with I. I, any opposed? Just pausing for John, said he may be in and out, so we do have. Yep, we have four. Yep, so we are approved. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
And now we will do what we just kind of prefaced. We'll flip the narrative. Board members, reminder, the checklist is also here on paper. If that was something, hopefully, that was used in engaging in your review of results, policy, world languages. So now we are shifting more to reasonable progress, not to compliance with our analysis and discussion.
Thank you for that segue, President Murphy. This will...
I can't read that. There's a chat from John, I couldn't read it.
This will be new for us in terms of not just the process of going over the results, but this is our work based off, you know, kind of months now, work on re-identifying how we're looking at results policy beyond quantitative data into the full story of leadership move, which has been, I think, the right piece of desire of the board. What you're going to see is, what's just now for you is that you notice that we did not check a box on this because we really are curious or listening to the board's discussion on what, you know, compliance, not, yes, actually, compliance looks like in terms of results or progress means of, results mean compliance, sorry. Secondly, you know, the team has really looked at, and how do we bring in the voices of some of the metrics that we formerly looked at? How are we looking at some of the metrics that were not originally identified in the past because it tells the whole story of world language? And how do we bring the voices of our students into the space so they, so the board can hear of the exact experiences and be able to determine where are the specific leadership moves that you will hear identified by our team relevant to reasonable progress for one, for one year? And how do those, how do those leadership moves come to fruition? So with that, I'm going to ask that we kind of erase our minds of formal results policies, practice monitoring reports, and kind of go into our new way of working. We, I don't want to call it a cheat sheet, you shouldn't say cheat.
Guide.
A guide. We have our scaffold. Yes, we have our scaffold in front of us to allow, to make sure that all the requirements that the board put in, for this board's expectations are put in place. We will name that while there was discussion at the table, Joe, thank you for doing so, about I want a style summary page. Unless you wanted four-point, we could get it down to one page. But I think it, because there's, we got to a space where everything was important. So we heard the message and didn't want to have everybody put on readers that read it, but also wanted the word to get out there. So I just want to explain that in advance as well.
Do you mind if I just add one thing? This is something that I've shared with Dr. Clarity and board. I think this is something we can kind of talk about. But with results monitoring in particular, you know, part of the process of this is determining reasonable progress. And I do struggle just a little bit with having a recommendation from the team. I kind of appreciate a bit of the authenticity that comes with the board having to do that grappling and determine what it is that we think of the report without the check coming to us in the first place. So I just want to elevate that as just something I contemplate because this is really right, the board's decision about, do we think you're complying or not? And I appreciate you might have a thought about that, but I don't know if I want to know that coming in. So I'm curious how this goes because we're not doing this somewhat accidentally because of how you all were positioned with this report, but that's something I've kind of been dwelling on. So just to put that out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm excited to be joined tonight by Rosemary Larson, our Director of Global Language Programs, and Diana Reddick as well, our CILO by Literacy Advisor, to share a bit more about world languages. As Dr. Clarity shared, we've taken a bit more comprehensive approach into the monitoring report and for interpretation of the indicators. So previously, we've just given you the enrollment data, the conversations at board workshop, and the feedback that we've gotten from the board really pushed us in exciting ways to go see, how do we compare with the rest of the state? What does this look like in Dade County? What might our students say about what they know about this? So excited to provide a bit more comprehensive look tonight with some other data sources and hopefully a more holistic picture. One technical note on the monitoring report, which is another area for feedback, we did struggle a little with in the current, in our new way of working, how we color code numbers. So in the past, we had often colored, we said it was going to be yellow if it was plus five, within plus five or minus five range. It was going to be red if it was a drop of 5% and green if it was above that. So we still followed that, that color coding, but could be got another shift in our ways of working in the future depending on how we think about what reasonable progress actually is to find us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rosemary to talk through some of what we've learned about our world language programming system. So to start us off, just this is a reminder of what the results policy states currently. And then the interpretation, they want us to focus on the phrases, preparing students to compete in a global economy because that lines up with what we say in our equity statement that we want, and our tagline, it's a preparing students to thrive in a diverse global society. This is the interpretation counts and the definition of terms. So they want us to think about that world language course is very much a focus on language development. So we emphasize individually and appropriately challenging levels. Unlike other content areas that have academic standards of certain grade levels, we have academic standards, however, they also have that added layer of proficiency and being able to develop language at different levels. We want to take a holistic approach and by going beyond what the indicators say and give you a more comprehensive view of what, how we are operating in a world language department. So the context and considerations. We are, I believe us to be a leading world language program among peer districts in Dade County due to the high number of students that take world language courses as well as writing languages that we offer. Students want to continue learning languages. They name things like knowledge, career readiness, understanding, and enjoyment of language, and their teachers, teachers are wonderful. They want to apply their language skills in different ways, whether it be in clubs, service learning, projects, different events. And we do have indicators that can show that our students are impressive. So here's the one consideration that, this is the percentage of high schoolers that took a world language in 23, 24. This is the latest data that I could get from DPI. You can see the wrong area, school district is, we looked at high school. They are about 1.69%. I want to, but we are further ahead than other school districts. I wanted to also call up that we, the data that we presented today has focused on high school because that's what we have been doing in the years. And then the number of world language courses that we offer at the high school, the different types of languages, it's French, German, Spanish, and Mandarin. We have four. So Madison Metro has two more, I think it's Arabic and American Sign Language. But we are competitive in that way. We were not able to offer American Sign Languages here because we were not able to find a teacher. That is, that is a, you know, a challenge that we're trying to overcome.
I probably offered Arabic, you know? Okay, for some reason, I thought.
So indicator one shows participation rates. So participation rates in both overall and then in advanced courses. Advanced courses, we are naming level four and above, AP, dual credit, and two-way immersion. And as you can see, the numbers have, was not as much of a percentage of students that are taking these courses. We did give a survey, which I will be showing you the results as to why students are not. Once we, once we get there, I'll show that to you. This is the number of focus group students, or percentage of focus group students enrolled in world language courses, as you can see. Enrollment has stayed fairly stable, the exception of our Black and African-American students. That did decrease significantly, although the students who were in RIS have two or more Rises did go up. Okay, another consideration is that for the students that are enrolled in our world For students enrolled in advanced world language courses, our numbers have not changed significantly. Something I wanted us to consider is that for more than half the students enrolled in world language courses, and this actually is 78.4% of students are earning in Arabic in these courses, so the vast majority of them are having success. And then I did break it down by focus group and what percent of our students are passing the courses. So notably, our English learning group shows the greatest opportunity for growth. Uh, this will be an area of focus for us next year. When asked if they will, uh, students, so I, I took a survey, the year survey, and 500 students did respond. And out of those students, the vast majority of them, 76% said that they want to continue, whether it be here in Verona area high school or in college or in other, uh, or other opportunities they might have in the community. 24% said no, and then 6% said maybe. We wanted students to tell us why do you want to continue? The vast majority of them noted that they wanted to increase their college and career opportunities, including college credit, have deeper understanding of the language and increased fluency and because they enjoyed it, they're interested and they like their teachers. Students who said no, that they would not be able to or willing to take the next level of language. Many of them said scheduling conflicts, so they wanted to take other courses. There's no run of their schedule. Some of them did say that they did not enjoy the class or it was too difficult or stressful. And then others said that they, uh, they met the requirements they needed to for college entrance or they didn't need it for their college major or they were graduating and they just were not going to continue at the university or college. Okay, so where we did have an increase was with the percentage of students who are passing the stamp test. So the students who take the stamp assessment, this test is a proficiency with reading, writing, listening, speaking in another language. And, uh, what we define as proficiency is whether or not they would qualify for the CLA by Literacy if they were junior. So it, it's an intermediate high, it's on a scale of nine, so it'd be level six. We had a significant increase, 32.1%. We did have fewer students taken, but a high percentage of them did, did pass. On the end of the survey, um, I did ask students whether they knew what the stamp test was. Uh, with one being, I don't know what this is and then five being, I can explain this to others in general terms. Most, more than half the students said that they did not know. That is, uh, learning for us, something that we want to include in information presentations made to students as they go through their world language journey. And then also encourage participation in CLA by Literacy. Okay, so with that in mind, now I will turn to the CLA by Literacy. I wanted to make you aware that there was a significant change at the state level last year. The CLA by Literacy is now recognized as an industry recognized credential in eight of Wisconsin's 10 academic and career planning pathways, including advanced manufacturing, architecture and construction, business administration, digital technology, hospitality and tourism, patient care, non-direct patient care and transportation, distribution and logistics. So CLA by Literacy is considered industry recognized credential for all those areas.
Can you explain that one more time? I'm not sure if I'm understanding what that means. Like they're connected or they're, or CLA by Literacy is another one among the list of I can leave high school and have myself be recognized with an industry standard credential?
Including though that kind of pathways is, is a credential within.
So I could leave as hospitality and tourism credentialed person? Or I could leave with a CLA by Literacy credential, right? It's, it's added to that list?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm hearing that right.
Indicator, um, industry, that's actually an indicator within our CTE results policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now CLA by Literacy. Integrated within that and recognized as an important part of that based on students' language skills and the industries that have basically required or benefit from students having a level of language.
So you can put it on their LinkedIn.
Correct, yes.
There you go.
The next indicator.
Awesome.
Yes, so this past year, uh, we had 52 attempts and 88.8% of them did achieve the CLA by Literacy. And then when looking at our focus groups where we had a significant number of students participate, we also did have increases this year. I wanted to, you know, but it's the first year that students who are identified as English learners and how we're included in these groups had enough students to speak. It's because of CLA by Literacy requires not only proficiency in a partner language other than English, it also requires proficiency in English. So that is a significant jump. And then now I'm going to pass it over to Diana. She is going to speak to some of the students' responses and voices that they, that on the CLA by Literacy.
Yeah, so one of the requirements that students must achieve for their portfolio is to do volunteer service to be immersed in a, like in a different country or they can write an essay. And so many of our heritage speakers will write an essay talking about what being bilingual means to them and they reflect on this process. And so I just wanted to share a couple of the quotes that they, um, shared with me. One of them is having a foreign accent is not synonymous with shame anymore, but rather strength and courage. So being able to reflect on that and being proud of that. Another one was, I think that what it means to be a bilingual student, to understand two worlds, to realize it's not about being divided between them, but about being the bridge that connects them with pride and love and with certainty that in that union lies my true home, which was amazing. Um, and then finally, this one was, was pretty amazing too, just her experiences. She said, I have accompanied my mother to her medical appointments to interpret for her. I helped my mother pay the rent, deposit her checks online, order her medications from the pharmacy. All of this has felt so normal ever since I could speak English that my ability to translate and communicate in both languages has become invaluable. So just being able to recognize those students and that achievement has been kind of amazing. Also Mara Hansman Calderon, she spoke last year. She did an essay for the Language Testing Institute and she won $500 as in third place for this scholarship, um, scholarship that she applied for. Um, I'm not sure how, if we can get it up on there, but she did, um, do a video. If there is a way I can share it, I can share the next board update. Okay, perfect. All right, I can share it with you too. So hearing her voice too is really amazing.
Okay, so when, um, sent to your survey, when we asked students to rate their knowledge on CLA by Literacy, again with one being, I don't know what that is, and then five being, I can explain this in general terms. We found that around 40% of our students didn't know what the CLA by Literacy is. So it's, it's something that we have to work on is increasing awareness.
I have a question, is it high school level, right?
That's on high school.
Okay, got it.
Out of the 500 students that responded, that is the percentage. Uh, the most recent data we have from the state as far as how many students across the state earn the CLA by Literacy. Here's the total number, it's not presented, it's total number of students out of all the school districts that offer the CLA by Literacy. Verona area, it's a little higher this year because it shows below 30 there, but we are higher. So it's, it shows that in comparison to other school districts, we're somewhere in the middle.
And is that the total number of districts offering the CLA by Literacy or there are more? This is just the top?
There are more.
Okay.
Although not all school districts will have recipients every year.
Sure.
There will be some years that a school district who has that ability to offer CLA by Literacy might not have a site to be just earned it.
Well, it looks like these, this is just raw numbers.
It is.
Most of these school districts seem like they're.
Yeah, exactly.
The percentage rise would have been further up the scale.
Yeah, yeah.
To that point, just a quick snapshot of our similar size, you know, as far as the largest your caucus, I see, we see all these super tatters. So we would be in comparison of Lloyd Middleton, um, Wabato's of our size, Manasha. Those are, when you talk about population of schools, of high school or districts, that's, those are, those are our peers.
So these are the leadership moves that we made this year in response to student needs. With CLA by Literacy, we continue to increase outreach, especially for students who have home languages other than English and those enrolled in advanced world language courses. And we encourage them to pursue the CLA by Literacy. Instructional alignment across languages during World Language Mondays to develop, to develop common rubrics for interpretive reading and presentational writing. These are aligned to the Wisconsin world language standards. And, uh, we are moving towards I can be consistent across all languages and grade levels based off of the level of the course. And then focus support for multilingual learners because the CLA by Literacy also requires proficiency in English. We worked on, um, our bilingual teachers, bilingual resource teachers and two-way immersion teachers have engaged in a very important league of standards. Actionable steps for the coming 25, 26 school year is just continuing to gather student feedback. It's valuable to know their experiences and how we can continue to encourage them to further develop their language. Expanded learning actions, you asked earlier Corby about Arabic. We want to get to a point in the future, if a student wants to learn Arabic, how are we supporting them? So, or any other language and looking at alternatives such as virtual learning or support learning and language study in other ways. Expanding efforts to increase high school enrollment and ahead of the course selection process, having students know about the world language program at the, at the high school. Continuing to promote the stamp test and CLA by Literacy for a year. And putting that information as well in the beginning level classes. And then continuing to strengthen curriculum and enrichment opportunities. So students having access to local teachers, being able to continue to find common rubrics and then add the World Language Mondays, that investment in time for teachers to really get together and just work together on, on world language opportunities to give to their students. As well as our two-way immersion program, having an opportunity for students to take, to complete a capstone project that's starting this next year. So we believe we've not provided enough evidence to show that we have a high quality world language program in the Verona area school district. And we've done work to provide students with these opportunities. And we believe that we've achieved reasonable progress as related in the spirits of the results policy, spirit of the results policy, even if not all of these indicators have increased enough. So, um, so this might, I think, already, I'm turning back over to you all just to think about, um, what questions do you have for us and help us to grapple with? Where are we in terms of our monitoring report and continuing to create reasonable progress?
Dr. Clarity has heard me say this a million times, so I'm sorry in advance. You know, I didn't go to high school in Wisconsin, but what I, what I, for the life of me, what bothers me is that DPI does not make world language a requirement to graduate. I think it should be. I think, um, students who don't take advantage of being able to, to learn another language is doing a huge disservice to you by the time you graduate. By the time you go to college, enter the workforce, it, it can only open doors and help you and it expands your mind in so many other different areas as well. I just, I'm baffled that DPI does not have it as a requirement to graduate. Does anyone know why they don't have it as a requirement to graduate?
Is that a joke? But then I'm going to put them on.
I mean, it's a brand. We will name that when we were digging into and just looking at some of this comparative data that the board asked, but we did look back at some of the other districts to see, is it a graduation requirement in those districts? And we did not find that it was either. So found that interesting, also very promising though that we do have such high student participation, even though it is a graduation requirement. And we are performing right up there with many of the larger school districts when it comes to the number of students we have earning the CLA by Literacy and the clear value they're finding in that process. Clearly some work to do in making sure all students are aware of it, but the students who are aware are passing at higher rates, have wonderful things to say about that experience. Really are making us a leader within the districts of our sizes.
Yeah, that's the same.
Even if we can't. State, state level decisions.
I mean, at least it lives here. And I think if we're going to say that, you know, we're trying to encourage our students to help them thrive in a diverse global society, having a world language program is crucial for that. Because beyond language, an introduction to a language is an introduction to a culture. And it's an introduction to an expand, expanding view of the world and the differences and the things that we do while we live our lives. So you're creating better global citizens by offering, continuing to offering and continuing to build a world-class world language offering. It's so important beyond, I hope we can add more languages, but it's so important because it's so central to our mission or equity statement. So, um, thank you for this work. I, I did have a question around how early do you plan on promoting the paths that exist for multilingual students in regards to the CLA by Literacy and the stamp test? Is this something you introduce in grade school, you think in middle school? How do we kind of start, uh, promoting this to students, but also their families? Because they also need, the families also need to be aware of this amazing benefit at home to be able to further support their students and believe the story, the truth, right? But they have to be, they have to have that knowledge at home as well to guide their students and guide their thinking and continue, continue through this process, yeah. Sorry, that was very long.
And Diana can share what she does at the high school. In middle school, we do during our two-way origin family nights, we can share the information about the CLA by Literacy to families there as well as through other means.
Middle school, does that start, is that middle school or sixth grade?
We did make a video last year based on some feedback from the board to make a video about the CLA by Literacy that we also shared in our multilingual forming newsletter as well. And we know that families get a lot of information. So what are the other places that we can really target and highlight this? Thinking about intentional recruitment in those classes to make sure students understand the benefit of that. Next year, we will also have our first graduating tweet class that we'll go through. And so getting their feedback about how we can continue to build backgrounds will be important as well.
Um, and I'm working with the, some of the VRTs and the English teachers, um, especially Susana Alvarez has shared with her advisory group, Michael Jensen, um, does a great job of sharing with his students, especially after they pass the access test, they're like, now you can get, now you can get your CLA by Literacy. So I'm working with those teachers too, to get the, the multilingual students more involved because sometimes they come knit here and they miss out on those, um, first meetings that we have. So just using those teachers as resources as well.
So as we're talking about this, I'm curious, I feel like last year you shared the different languages that students earn the seal in, like we had a deep, right? We tend to talk a lot about tweet programming, multilingual as it talks, as we were talking about Spanish and English, but I know we had SEAL recipients last year in multiple languages. Can you share with me, because I'm, I'm curious, like the likelihood if I am a native English speaker and I have not taken a language until I start high school? What is the likelihood I could earn the seal? Or is this predominantly native, non-English speaking students that are being able to elevate to this? Do you, do you kind of see my question? Because it kind of goes with all of this of how do we give access? And the leadership moves, I'm hearing you all say to elevate this, like what is that pathway for a student that maybe just didn't have the opportunity, space, interest until they're a freshman to navigate a second language? Is this achievable?
If they're taking Spanish one as a freshman, um, the way that. If they're taking Spanish one as a freshman, the way that learning.
Or French one or writing, yeah.
The way the language works, normally to reach intermediate high, they would have to get at least five years. And that's with, you know, lots of studying, not just every other day, seeing their teacher. This year, I believe, I don't have the exact numbers here, I can tell you that our students that were neither multilingual or tweet, we had 25 take the stamp test and the reading scores were 6.5, so an average of 6.5. The writing scores were a little bit lower, 5.7, so very close to that intermediate high. Listening was 6.3, 6.26, and speaking was lowest at 5.13. So they are getting close. And we did have at least, let's say, seven achieve six or higher in all five categories. It is possible. My Spanish five class, I really, we practice those writing and speaking, those productive skills a lot so that, and especially right in January and February to prepare them for the stamp test. And I do recruit, you know, I, I say, please take the stamp test, please take it, just see where we're at, you know, so we can help our program get better and see that we're doing our job. And so I did have 25 students take it this year and overall they did pretty well. But usually it's, like I said, it's, it's about five years to get to that level.
That's helpful to know, just in thinking about, right, how we offer things younger, how we really live the fact that we've committed to being a multilingual district despite not having forced parameters to make us be that, you know, just what that looks like to create that interest, passion, availability earlier on. I know it's a hard piece, but.
As Rosemary spoke too, we do more language programming in our middle schools and are excited about being able to offer that to our students. And so I think that's something that we'll continue to think about, how we also help them right away to see this as a pathway that, that could be for you as a part of that process. It was never to reflect it here because we wanted to compare apples to apples. I think we've been using just high school numbers, but excited that we're able to offer that to our inner middle students.
Thank you.
I, I have a lot to say, probably too much, but it's all on the process side. So all, all I say is that I, I definitely feel like we have a high quality world language program. It's something I think I'm, I'm proud of and I think our district should be proud of. And please don't take any of my process comments later as a criticism at all of the programming because I think it's terrific.
Well, with that segue-ish, Joe, any other questions, I guess, about the report itself or things related to world languages that would be helpful to service to the team before we shift it more than into board and process and analysis?
Yeah, I think it's hard, right? Because in the, in the process that we follow up to this point, like we usually, someone makes a motion first. I'm not, I, I'd like to talk.
Discuss.
Before I'm in any position to make a motion or support a motion, honestly. Because, and I'll tee off some of my comments, I mean, this is gonna be repetitive of things I've said over and over again. One of the, one of the criticisms I have of our governance model is the rigidity with which we do monitoring. It seems like it's strictly indicator-based. And when we were creating and approving these indicators, it, it, in hindsight, let me back, it feels forced, like we were thinking, oh, I need to have lots of different indicators here. So we ended up creating some that frankly are not useful at all. And so we end up with these monitoring reports that are filled with data, a very low percentage of which actually tells me anything I want to know. But like, at the same time, we have a governance model that I've, I'm feeling like I can't just reject the indicators because if I do, then what are we even doing for? But I, I'd love to see us going forward, get, just get rid of the indicators that are useless to us, even if it means we have only one indicator for a result policy or frankly no indicators and all of this comes to us as evidence and I get to make up my own mind about whether we're in compliance.
So if the board tells me right now, we don't have to do another enrollment indicator, I would.
I can't speak for the board, but I can tell you.
I can speak, I know, I can speak for me too, right? Especially we're talking.
Enrollment indicator, gah.
Especially we're talking about compliance and the yellows and the greens and the reds, it's all so.
I'll tell you the data that I found most useful in this entire conversation was what you just said.
Yes.
About the stamp test.
Yes. That, because it feels like what we're supposed to be monitoring is the effectiveness with which we deliver world language instruction, not the effectiveness with which we get students to enroll in world language instead of enrolling in CTE or in, or in music and art, you know. I also liked, I definitely liked the data around the Seal by Literacy and the stamp test and all the focus groups because that tells us, again, that's about performance. I even like the data about course offerings relative to other districts, not relative to what we did last year. Because I, I feel like that tells a story too of us compared to our peers, how, because I mean, in addition to how well we deliver the instruction, we need to offer it too. And some of that feels maybe it's a little OE11 stuff and that's where that blend that Jen mentioned before comes in. But my struggle I'm dealing with right now is I very much want to say that, that reasonable progress is achieved because I feel that reasonable progress was achieved, but we got these lagging indicators that just aren't, are useless.
So with that, Joe, how do you feel like this is working in terms of guiding, you know, to giving a frame, not only to the leadership team, but to ourselves in terms of what we really want to kind of see in process? Because nothing on here speaks to indicators that talk about enrollment. Because I feel like a lot of the narrative was guided by this, which I found incredibly helpful, you know, all of the leadership moves and the summary pieces within the document.
Yeah, I mean, I feel that it's one of the reasons I liked what John put together most of all, is I don't know that you see a word indicator on here at all.
Right, right.
And if we all as a group decide that we can just set aside indicators and come, and make our own decisions about whether or not we think a report is in compliance or not, or reasonable progress is achieved or not, I wholeheartedly 100% will support that. I think the next question would be, why do we have indicators at all?
And are you speaking with indicators specifically to results? Do you feel the same way about indicators for operational?
I think I feel less strongly about the operational ones, but I'm not in that mindset. Maybe I, maybe I'm.
Sure. And we don't have to go down that road yet, but I was just.
That was what I think. But yeah, I mean, I think you're right, following this checkbox, I'd be very comfortable saying reasonable progress achieved.
Same here, I really like the data on the question of taking the next level of your current world languages. I think that speaks to, are we promoting that message of what this means to you, beyond just being a course, what this means to your long-term? No. Beyond high school, to college, career readiness. So I love that question, but that to me is a powerful indicator that we're doing something right if a lot of students, the more and more students say yes to that, that I plan on continuing, the more and more students understand the value of stamps and Seal by Literacy. I just don't see this story playing out in a really impactful way.
And I totally agree with that and I love that about this report too, is that you all went out and gathered data that wasn't directed to you by indicators. Because you're like, we're gonna go and get the data that actually tells the story we want to know.
And that it came straight from the students. I mean, I find myself, I think we've talked about this before, that these ideas, when I was helping run our mentor program, living in the data of implementation versus data of impact. It's so easy to talk about data of implementation, which to me feels OE, right? Like what's the instructional design, what's being set out and implemented? But this is data of impact and who better to talk about impact than the students themselves who are feeling the impact of the instructional design? And the data like you shared Dana about the stamp test, I mean, right, that's, what is the story that tells us what is happening to the students as a result of all the work that's being kind of structured? So I found the report and all the narrative to do exactly that, like it really centered, for me, the student experience and the impact. And that feels like what a results report ought to be, is the data of impact, not implementation. And enrollment data kind of lives more on the implementation side to me. I think we've sort of hammered that concept that we all loaded, so. Yeah. So with that said, I also agree that I would find this report to be achieving reasonable progress because of this, all of this holistically and the narratives and the data that you all shared in the report and here, sort of in lieu of some of the indicators that just have kind of carried over.
Same.
I love what we're doing when we don't have requirements nagging at us. It really says a lot about district, our students, families, the commitment to this idea and this belief and the value of language when it isn't forced upon by a requirement. Not to say that that's not valuable, but really amazing to look at that, how you elevated Corby, that it's not dictated by anything else external.
And I love how in this report, we heard the voices of the students. We heard that quality of feedback that, that really tells the story. And I think in a lot of our data, we need to get more of that or continue on that trend because there's nothing like hearing the voice of the students. We can, you know, extrapolate that in numbers, but hearing their voice also adds to that.
While board, we have discussed and analyzed our monitoring reports, so at this point I would accept a motion.
Can I ask you that for a quick one? Around the reasons to not continue, which do you guys think is the easiest, kind of lowest hanging fruit to interest?
I heard you say that, I want to do enrollment.
Woo-hoo, best board meeting ever.
Because it's just, and also, and as you were speaking, Joe, when we, while we knew this was the right model for us in terms of what our community expects, in terms of understanding, accountability between superintendent and the board bed, we were hitting the mark very well in those areas. The district that we most relied on to train us how to do this actually doesn't use indicators or result policies.
Ah.
I didn't know that. Which district does it?
Interesting little nugget. Yeah. I saw where you were going.
But they, they use a report mark type system, so this is good on those reports.
Okay, now we're talking.
There's new questions?
Oh yeah, that was about the world language, the reasons to not continue, yeah.
I, you know, not enjoying my class and too difficult, stressful. It hurts. It hurts me. You know, just continually talking with students and making those connections. We've had quite a few new teachers move in to these positions and now they've settled and they're second, third year here, so it's easier to make those connections and they're not stressed. And so hopefully we can, we can talk about this and I want to bring this data back to my team as well. I think focusing more on the culture too. And I know that when I interviewed, I always interview my Spanish five students and at the end, it's their speaking exam, but I want to know what they enjoyed about the class. And they always say the culture and what I learned about other, other countries and other people. And that is always, and the history, that that is the part, the grammar they don't care about, they don't, they don't care about the grammar, but it's the culture and the history that they really enjoy. So just sharing some of those with my colleagues, I think, and talking more with the students and how we can support them throughout the year.
Thanks for that. Yeah, it's funny because my son, he's only in fourth grade, but he came home in fifth grade, fourth grade one day and just, he had kind of an epiphany. It was basically that cultural moment where he was like, Dad? It's like, yeah, it's like, I really love being tweet and taking Spanish, like why? It's like, because it's opened up a whole new world to me, of people that I can talk to, and it's like a whole world of just living a different life and seeing how different lives are lived. And like, he really kind of got it. And to me, I was like, that's super deep for, you know, for a teenager. And I have to say that he went from doing okay, you know, not being, you know, speaking Spanish at home very much, to like hitting like a level of proficiency in degrees at like, I don't want to embarrass him, not that he. He probably never listens to this meeting, but just saying, I was just floored at his level of proficiency and how much he's grown. And that growth happened because of that moment of realizing how his world just became larger by learning a new language and being able to speak to all these Spanish classmates. And that was beautiful to me. So I, your comment made me think of that because I think the more students kind of that, have that experience, they're probably gonna realize the same thing. It's just like, wow, my world just opened up much more, much further beyond than what it was yesterday. So, sorry to be rude.
No, I, I also really appreciate the connection back to what we were talking about earlier in the meeting about staff retention and how important it is that we retain our high-quality staff because it does take a while to settle in and to become, and have students become fully teachers, the teachers become fully students. And once you get that, we, we want to keep our people here as long as they want to be here.
And I think the work, even just, you know, we named it as a leadership move, it's just the World Language Mondays. Also make sure that we're building rubrics, common assessments and helping support teachers to collaborate together to then think about, what is it that we heard from students? How do we make, we make learning fun, how do we connect to the culture? And I think when you're speaking to Juan Carlos, it's really student agency, helping students to understand and feel like they have a level of agency in what they're learning and to feel empowered by that and just how, how important that is to this journey as well. So it's exciting to get some of that student voice and I appreciate the team really leaning into even some of the data that wasn't necessarily what we wanted to hear or see, but recognizing that those are, that's the invitation and our next opportunity to lean in and make sure students are aware of the opportunities and those are the places that we can continue to grow and support our staff to do the same.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Well, I know. I mean, I feel like I'm willing to make a motion to accept this report as reaching achievable, or reasonable progress. So I'm gonna make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so there's a motion by me, and I don't usually make motions because I'm usually talking. And a second by Joe, all those in favor of approving the results monitoring report for world languages as achieving reasonable progress signify with aye. Aye, any opposed? Thanks, John. John gave me an aye via text. And thanks for the note, John. We will continue our conversations, but thank you.
Thank you.
Does that count, text?
Yeah, I say so. Robert's rules, Jen's rules. Okay, thank you. So moving ahead, oh, oh, I went, I shouldn't have done that.
Did you skip?
Oh yeah. Yeah, I already went ahead, thanks, I mean. Moving ahead to OE eight, any updates, board members, just communications, anything anybody wants to share?
Juneteenth parade going on this Saturday, in Park, 10:30 AM-ish.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, students, families, everyone's welcome.
Great. An exciting, yeah, that's great, thank you. Okay, I will share, I'm finally gonna follow through, you're all gonna get a doodle poll soon about a board retreat.
Oh.
Dun, 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 we're doing a doodle, so be prepared. And that's all I have for OE eight. What?
No beach, beacher.
Christopher has said he's gonna make paella.
I heard it and I'm holding.
Yeah, like multiple times I've heard that echoed, if we have a workshop retreat, we're having paella, so that's what I'm, regardless of time of day or day of week, I'm gonna hold them to that. Then moving on to superintendent's consent agenda, please again, make sure you've looked that over, are there any questions? Putting all the hiring updates, so that's great. Hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda has been approved. Oops. There we go. This is fun. Looking then to board consent agenda, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, the board's consent agenda has been approved. Future dates right now are just the board meetings that take us through the summer, which is just kind of eerie to look at and think that that takes us through the summer. But again, stay tuned, we'll hopefully get a retreat in here before the start of the school year is my goal. All right, with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Woo, that was also a tie, we'll give that one to Corby. Is there a second?
Second.
Juan Carlos, all those in favor of adjourning the agenda signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, John.
I adjourned.
Thanks all.
Thirty minutes left.
Thanks, all.